Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, February 2nd, and we're in regular session tonight. The first item of business is to establish a quorum, and we have all council members present tonight. Second item of business is communications, and we have several items, one of which is a...
Disposition of minutes.
We have a disposition of minutes for the session held January 5th, 2015. Do we have a motion?
I so move.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the disposition of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Our next item of business is communications, and we have a liquor permit transfer request, and this is from Westside Tavern, Inc., on 12 East Carpenter Street, to 700 East State Company, LLC, on 700 East State Street. So, we have...
We figured out that was the old Maplewood.
It's the Maplewood side of the Maplewood Inn is the one that it's transferring to on 700 East State Street. If there are any concerns on the part of City Council, the responses must be postmarked no later than February 23rd. The next item is a communication from President Rodrick McDavid, and he's thanking Athens City Council members, and I would also add, on behalf of the City Council, all of the community for participating and making the honey-for-the-heart part of the Halloween festivities during the year. And I think this is certainly an item that has been a great opportunity for Athens' community to interact prior to some of the later-in-the-evening festivities. It's a good community-building experience, so we have that personal thank you from President The third item of communication is that I would like to just take a moment so that, on behalf of council members, so that we could pay our respects to Judge or Honorable Douglas James Bennett, who passed away in January, and to acknowledge the many years that he served on Athens County Municipal Court from January 1985, and served three six-year terms until 2003. So, just want to acknowledge his many years of service to our community. Are there any other communications from council members? If not, we'll move on to communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wile?
Let's see, a couple things. Two announcements that came out early today. One is that university terraces will be closed between Park Place and Bryant Hall area. That'll be 4th of February, so that's Wednesday. Looks like it's all day, they're doing some work on Cupper Hall. The other one is the alley, College Street will be closed the 5th, the next day, Thursday, between 7:00 and 3:00 p.m., between Union Street and Cantona Hall. Again, all work overdue. Let's see, a couple other things. The Planning Commission will have its meeting this Thursday at 12:00. They'll be looking at a Title 41, case 1502. This is an expansion of Jack Deos on 55 Campbell Street, just so you people know. I don't think it requires any variances, of course, otherwise it wouldn't be Title 41. I've also been told that our time-waners have been moving our station around, our government channel. As far as that is, still in flux, and nobody seems to know where it is part of the time, so if you want to watch it, go to your computer. The reason I say that is because the TV up here has one channel, the TV down on first block has a different channel, so we're trying to parse it out what's going on with them. I'm sure people, several people, people will talk to us about it and tell us about it. Let's see, two other things offhand. One is that, of course, we've become a certified local government, and Paul O'Gan, the Historic Preservation Committee, is looking at trying to obtain some grant money from that. It's a 60-40 match. I think they're targeting the Armory for further development. There's a whole series of things that can be done with it, whether it's planning or actually designs. Usually these grants run somewhere between $10,000 to $20,000, $25,000 max. So, it gives us an opportunity to go chase some more dollars now that they went to the work of doing a certified local government. We have another revenue stream as a result. The other one is I received a missive from Marge Stone. She was one of the members who were nominated to the Capital Square Review and Advisory Board and the Capital Square Foundation, 2015 Grade Ohioans. They choose two. One is Angie's Meyer Driscoll, who looks like a cryptologist. The other one is Rufus Putnam, which you know, of course, has started up this whole area, both Athens and Marietta. So, she was part of the nomination. She was also part of the lobbying that went with that, because I remember sending letters out saying, you know, "We want this nomination." So, it came through, so I have to, you know, give her kudos for doing all that legwork in that sense. And I believe that's all I have.
I have one question. On the certified local government, you said that was a 60-40, 40-match for us?
40% for us, yes. And again, I think it's preliminary. He's just trying to chase some dollars, and again, the push, what I've heard from council is the direction is to do something with the Armory, look at it in terms of potential. And again, it's a... Local, certified local government really has to do with historical preservation in general. I believe they're thinking about trying to extend it to the downtown area and look at other registries. And part of it can be actually searching out historic registries, vetting it. Let's see, I think I have a whole selection here, but rather than go into it, yeah. And it's in its form at a stage, so we've got ways to go with it.
Thank you, Mayor. Law Director Lang?
No report, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to the next item of business, which is ordinances for second reading. And these commonly, on the second ordinance time, we read through the title of them, but then unless they're going to be suspended, then we'll move on to the ones for first reading, where there'll be further explanation. Ordinances for second reading, 01-15, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two replacement buses for the Athens Transit System, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
We do need to amend this ordinance.
Okay.
Remember nicely.
Okay.
So, I don't know if everyone has that in front of them this evening. Okay. So, this, we talked about this, about our purchasing of the replacement buses. We are moving to amend a third whereas. I don't know, maybe I should read it tonight, since everyone doesn't have it in front of them, just to help. Whereas, said purchases are through a federal 5339 capital grant, and whereas, the federal share will cover 80% of the cost of said purchases, and this is where we are going to remove, asking to remove. So, whereas, the total cost is $131,325, and should be reimbursed within 30 days of the delivery and payment, the city's local share being $26,40. So, we are removing that. Be it ordained by the Council, the City of Athens, Ohio, Section 1, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend, so we're changing that. We're amending and removing. And Section 2, the City Auditor, is hereby directed to receipt reimbursed funds into the Transportation Fund 214. So then, we're adding some whereases in the back. I'll read the ones that will stay in. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of two replacement buses for the Athens Transit System, whereas, said purchases are through a federal 5339 capital grant, and whereas, the federal share will cover 80% of the cost of said purchases. We are adding, and to add, whereas, the cost is $125,803, the city's local share being So, that is slightly less than what the original, what we originally had in the ordinance. Whereas, transit-designated grantee HAPCAP shall arrange the purchase and pay local share, initially invoicing the city for the same in the next quarterly billing cycle, and whereas, vehicles and equipment shall become property of the City of Athens upon delivery. So, basically, what we needed to do, and we did discuss this at a transportation meeting, we needed to pull HAPCAP in and figure out how those payments were going to go in between, in and out of the different accounts, and how we were going to be reimbursed. So, now, I move to amend ordinance 0-01-15.
Second. So, we have a motion to amend and a second. All those in favor to amend this ordinance? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, the ordinance has been amended, and is it considered read for the first time now? Okay, thank you, Member Pappy. Ordinance 0215, this is an ordinance declaring a rural transit bus no longer needed for a municipal purpose, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 0315, an ordinance amending the 2015 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
I think that was amended last time.
I'm sorry. I picked up my old, I picked up my January 20th notes. Thank you. Ordinance 0415, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to extend the current contract to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Convention and Visitors' Bureau, and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Is that, does that need suspension as well?
Well, it'd be nice, since we're not working under contract.
What?
Your choice.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend.
So move. A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend ordinance 0415. The reason for this being is that the contract is currently expired. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, the motion has been suspended. The ordinance has been suspended.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 04-15.
Second. We have a motion and a second then to approve ordinance 0415.
Again, this is a contract that's put forth every three years, I believe it is. This is an extension of that contract to go from January 1st of 2015 to December 31st of 2017.
All those in favor of approving ordinance 0415? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ordinance is approved. Ordinance 0515 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 11.08, Taxi Cabs, introduced by Councilmember Paul. Now, we'll move on to ordinances for first reading. The first one being 0615, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $70,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes issued for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring and installing energy conservation improvements at the city's center, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance is about four, five pages long, so I'll just get to the crux of the matter. We have, notes are issued in anticipation of the bond in the amount of $145,000. That's the prior note, and it's about to mature. So, we're saying we're going to renew in an amount of $70,000, and that'll be through the Hocking Valley Bank, so we're going local. I don't think there's any reason to suspend this ordinance for tonight, but I think at our next meeting, we'll probably have to suspend the rules on the second reading.
Okay. And if I'm remembering correctly, the renewal rate is .3?
.3.
.3%.
Madam President, the mayor?
Yes, Mayor Wile?
And again, this is for the energy efficiencies. We started several years back, more than several years back, with Perfection Group. The community center was the largest use of that, it's newest building, but also the biggest energy consumption, so consumer. So, at this point, this is why we did that. We've been paying it down, year in and year out, by just, you know, by rolling over the debt. The only other thing I would point out is, in the title, it says "City's Recreation Center." I know there are some that would grind their teeth if you said that, not "Community Center." So, just to point that out.
Is that something we can change as a typo? It's not really a typo, is it? Okay, it won't work.
Whatever you choose to do. I will not grind my teeth.
Best known as the Community Center for everyone, okay? All right. And then, this is the, this will be the next-to-last year that we'll be rolling this over, because we have approximately, what, $70,000, $75,000 left in the remaining balance of the money loaned or borrowed to accomplish these energy efficiencies. Okay. Thank you, Member Reisner. Ordinance 0715 is an ordinance authorizing the payment of a prior-year expense and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move to suspend the rules. Second.
Okay.
The reason for the suspension is this is for a prior-year expense. We have a bill that's due, needs to be paid.
Okay, we have a...
I believe the interests of public safety and public welfare need to do it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to suspend ordinance 0715. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, the rules are suspended.
Madam President, I would like, I now move to adopt ordinance 0715.
Second.
And for the same reasons, it's a bill that needs to be paid, it's $16,500 outstanding to Medical Fund, and so, let's get over with.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 715. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion, or the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 0815 is an ordinance amending the 2014 appropriation ordinance, and introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Madam President. This particular ordinance is to appropriate $11,000 from the Athens Enhancement Fund, which is 250 TC 300, and it falls in line with the Essence of Athens Plan, or the template for arts in the city. This would be for wraps that are going to go around a lot of our, well, not a lot, 10 of our uptown traffic switch boxes at some locations, up and down Court Street. Again, the Athens Municipal Arts Council really put this document together, essentially describing the whole RFP process for artists applying to get their art within these wraps, these vinyl wraps. The vinyl wraps will last four to five years, six years possibly, depending on weather and a number of other factors, I'm sure. But again, this is kind of the low-hanging fruit, if you will, of part of the Essence of Athens, of, again, bringing more arts into the city and enhancing our cityscape. Member Reisner?
Councilmember Butler. Councilmember Butler.
Royal Arm.
Royal Arm. Oh, thank you. Sitting, as a council member who sits on the Athens Municipal Arts Commission meetings, I would say that there's been a lot of deliberation about this idea, there's been a lot of footwork. Again, this is a volunteer commission that's putting lots of time and energy into this, so they've done their homework, it's been discussed thoroughly. There's also data that indicates when boxes like this are covered with artwork that's designed specifically, it also then deters graffiti, so I think there's a plus-plus there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, thank you. We'll now move on to ordinance 0915, an ordinance determining to proceed with replacement of existing sidewalk improvements associated with the West Union Street Infrastructure Improvements Project, which is number 280, is described in Resolution R09-14, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Madam President. We discussed this at length at a committee meeting, and this has become a rather routine process for us. What is good about this particular replacement and on Union Street is that there were no property owners who protested. They all must have agreed with the way their sidewalks were replaced. So, I'm not, I don't think I'm going to read this tonight, we don't need to suspend, but this allows for us to then send out the notice to the owners of the cost.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to ordinance 1015, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Union to State on Saturday, April 18th, 2015, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the International Street Fair, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. The street fair this year is April 18th. The street, we're asking for the street to be closed from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. That allows for setup and cleanup. And it is closed from Court Street from Union, except for the fire lanes, down to State Street. Is that accurate? Or is it just Washington Street?
Union to State, Section 1.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, Union to State. I would take note that this does take additional city service workers to do this.
Are you asking a question?
No, I'm not asking a question, I'm just stating that. And whenever we close our streets, and this also happens to be, as was announced in the newspaper today, also the same night or day as the number fest. So, we'll have two very large events going on in the city at one time, which will stretch our resources. I just thought I'd mention that. We do not need to suspend, we can move forward.
Okay. Ordinance 1115 is an ordinance amending ordinance 97-98, the Platte Bateman subdivision, and this is introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend this particular ordinance.
Second.
The reason being that there's a drop-dad date for the property owners, as it stands, and it took a bit longer for the, some of the review to, there were more steps than were led to believe on the review, and so I'd like to kind of hustle it through. It has been reviewed by many entities within the city.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ordinance, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you. I move that we pass 1115.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1115.
This was presented last week by Mr. Walker, and, but specifically, it, the purpose of it is to ensure that the septic systems that are associated with the houses will be able to go with the deeds and run with the deeds for the rest of the time that they will be there. And it has been reviewed by the, several, the Code Enforcement Office, Don Powsky, Planning Commission, recommended that it would be put forward to us to approve, and all the legal documentation has been put together for the deed easements.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 1115. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion is adopted, the ordinance is adopted. We now have a one-reading resolution, and this is R-03-15, a resolution expressing the appreciation of the City of Athens, Ohio, to Patrick Lang for his public service, introduced by all council members. And we've asked the council member who's served the longest with Mr. Lang, Councilmember Kent Butler, to read the whereases.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to adopt Resolution R-03-15.
Second.
And with your permission, Madam President, I'd like to read the whereases.
Yes, please do.
And to thank Law Director Lang for his service work to our city. Whereas, Patrick Lang has served the City of Athens, Ohio, as law director since January 2008. And whereas, Patrick Lang, in his role as law director, has represented the city's interests at the local, state, and national level. And whereas, Patrick Lang previously served the City of Athens as a council member during the 1998-99 term. And whereas, Patrick Lang has also served the Athens County community as an assistant county prosecutor. And whereas, Athens City Council wishes him well as he begins his first term as judge of Athens Common Pleas Court, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, et cetera, et cetera. I think you get the picture. We're very grateful for your hard work and your service to our community.
So, we have a motion and a second to accept this one-reading resolution in appreciation of Patrick Lang. All those in favor signify by saying, oh, Mayor Wile, would you like to make some...
It's a pleasure serving with you, working with you. Likewise. We've had many discussions on all sorts of topics, everything from tax abatements on East State Street to various court cases that the pop is set up, and it's been, it's been great, actually, and instructive. Thank you.
Madam President, if I could just say just a few words here.
Sure.
I think most of us are familiar with the old saying about how you should always try to leave things a little better than when you found them. And I can remember first kind of hearing that idea or hearing that saying when I was in Boy Scouts, growing up, and so before the meeting tonight, I actually Googled to see where that statement had originally come from, and as it turns out, the person credited with having said that is Lord Robert Baden Powell, who was, of course, the founder of the Boy Scouts. So, if nothing else, I can leave you with that bit of trivia as my lasting contribution to this city, or certainly to those of you watching tonight, anyway. I think by almost any fair measure, the City of Athens today is a better place to live and work and play than it was when I arrived in this job seven years ago, and certainly from when I served as a member of this council 17 years ago. And to the extent that I was able to contribute in some small way to that improvement, it's certainly an honor to have done that. I think mostly, that fact is due in large part to the hard work put in by the current and member, former members of this council, to Mayor Wile, and to Mayor Abel before him, to Auditor Hecht, and to those women and men who volunteer their time to serve on our city boards and commissions, the concerned citizens who show up to meetings like this from time to time and let us know what we're doing wrong, to the city workers, police, fire, sewer workers, street workers, city prosecutors, and everyone else in between. To all of them, I just want to say, and to all of you, through the bottom of my heart, that it was an honor to serve alongside of you, and that I look forward to spending Monday nights at home on my couch, looking through the channels, and maybe occasionally stumbling onto the government channel and tuning in for a few minutes to see what all of you are continuing to do to improve our city. So, thank you.
Oh, many thanks for your distinguished service, and we know that you're still going to be in the community through the Athens County Common Pleas Court and the work there, so, thank you so much. Okay, so we have the motion and the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'm sure they're not opposed to say nay, so, thank you very much. The resolution is adopted and entered into the books. Having worked through the ordinances and resolutions, we now have announcements and other business, and just so I don't forget, what I would like to find out is which committees would like to meet... like to meet next week. So, planning and development with Councilmember...
Finance and Personnel.
Finance and Personnel, okay.
City and Safety Services.
City and Safety Services, okay.
Can I add an agenda item? I know I'm not on the committee, but I'd like to mention something for services, and I've been getting many requests to discuss the Richland Avenue pedestrian crosswalk as a, as a topic of conversation.
Oh, on, for, City and Safety Services, okay.
I guess I do it under transportation as well. Maybe we put it in both places.
Okay. All right. We have some appointments and reappointments for several commissions that help us with our city work, the first of which is the Disabilities Commission, and Councilmember Patterson has some reappointments to announce.
I do, and I'm going to have to ask the mayor to help me out with one of them. I know that Daryl Purdy, who works at Ohio University and has been serving on the Commission on Disabilities for, I believe, he's just completed his first term, he's been a huge contribution, made huge contributions to the Commission on Disabilities, so therefore I'd like to nominate him for reappointment and for Lori Kinney. Lori Kinney has been serving as the vice chair on the Commission on Disabilities and, again, serving in that capacity well. She works now at NAMI here in Athens, Athens NAMI. So, therefore, I'd like to nominate both of those for a second term reappointment under the Commission on Disabilities.
Okay, so, yes, Mayor Wild.
I would like to point out that I believe you changed the bylaws or the code that they have term limits, but because that was just instituted this past year, the clock is reset and they will have another term to play out of these things. Two terms or three terms?
Two.
Two. And again, they've both been very useful. Ohio University has a liaison that's been very helpful because he has a major portion of our population here. Lori's been very quiet, but she's been pretty steadfast in making sure the Disabilities Commission works well. And I'd be the first one to tell, I have not attended as much as I used to, just because I know it's been a good appearance between you, Steve, and, and the new members that have been coming on board. There's a lot more energy in them, so.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the nomination for reappointment of Daryl Purdy and Lori Kinney to the Athens Commission on Disabilities. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, their nominations for reappointment are approved. We have some appointments for Shade Tree Commission from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. First, I have a reappointment for three members. Lee Gregg, Emily Wood, and John Katuski, who are already members at this point, and they would like to be reappointed for another two-year term. Do we want to hear all of them? Or do we want to do reappointments and an appointment? They're kind of different.
Okay.
I move that we appoint these, reappoint these people to the Shade Tree Commission.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the reappointment of three members, Lee Gregg, John Katuski, and Emily...
Wood.
Wood, to the Shade Tree Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay. That motion to approve the nominations for reappointment is approved.
And I would like to appoint to an alternate, alternate position Jeff Buckley for a term. Jeff Buckley is a professor in the Geography Department, and he will be valuable. He's worked with tree commissions before.
And I think he's also been actively involved in the sustainability plan for the university and been working on that a number of years, so, okay.
I want to say thank you to everybody who volunteers for these commissions. They make our city tick, so.
So, we have the motion to approve Jeff Buckley as an alternate and a second to that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, then, the motion to appoint Jeff as an alternate to the tree commission has been approved. And do we have other announcements? Any other announcements? Yes, Councilmember Patterson?
I have an update. This just came out this afternoon. I know that the Service Safety Director is aware, and Mary, I'm hoping you're aware of this as well, but it's interesting, is that a lot of you may be aware and may not that this year, we put in a bid again to hopefully become the host city in two thousand sixteen for the International Town Gown Association Annual Conference. We were just notified earlier today that they want to have a Skype interview with the group, the team that's been working on this. Ajolost has been part of this group, as has Donna Goss at the university and Jennifer Kirksey. So, therefore, we're essentially on the shortlist to, as this moves forward. Some good news.
Okay.
I also wanted to share, if I may, that the American Red Cross Southeastern Ohio Hometown Heroes banquet or breakfast is, it's a ticketed event, but that's happening Tuesday, March tenth at seven AM. The reason I bring that up is that we have a member on the Commission on Disabilities, Carolyn Lewis, who was put forward and is going to be honored as a hometown hero. And if I'm correct, and there, I'm going to ask you for guidance on this, I believe that our fire department or...
I believe they've been nominated, I sit in there in the queue, but I can tell you one way or the other.
Yep, so, okay.
First response is actually generally with the fire incident, but it means that maybe it includes two. I haven't heard that officially.
I have not either.
And in terms of the International Town Gown Association, again, it's an opportunity to host a conference here, but also have other universities, towns, and gowns see what we're doing right and learn from what they're doing as well. And I know you've attended at least two of the conferences. Do you intend to do this one this year?
It's unique this year, yes, I am the present this year. As a matter of fact, we pitched an idea to the executive director, and that was that we would like to have a panel of discussants from across the nations. It'll be a panel of four or five individuals, to include myself, to talk about what cities are doing out there, to address having the difficult conversations, especially surrounding the events earlier this year or last year in Ferguson, Missouri. So, it's going to be an interesting panel to kind of not only present at, but also to moderate this group as we move forward.
Okay. Any other announcements? If not, we now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items not covered on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? If there's no one that wishes to speak, then we'll consider a motion for adjournment of the meeting. We have a motion and a second to adjourn the council meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The meeting's adjourned at seven thirty-eight PM. Thank you.